All right. Thank you, Brian, and welcome, everyone, to this December 12, 2022, meeting of the Homewood City Council. We don't have any proclamations tonight, so I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. We're going to start with an invocation from Counselor Smith, which will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone will please stand.
All right. If y'all bow your heads. The Advent story is a hope of hope, is a story of hope and mystery, of anticipation and preparation. It's the story of a kingdom of this world and the next, and a king appearing when we least expect him. It's about heaven touching earth, and a people searching for a Savior, and walking past the stable. Open eyes and hearts that this might be an advent of hope to the world. God of hope, who brought love into this world, be the love that dwells within and among us. God of hope, who brought peace into this world, be the peace that dwells within and among us. God of hope, who brought joy into this world, be the joy that dwells within and among us. God of hope, the rock we stand on, be the focus of our lives always, and particularly during this Advent time. Amen.
Thank you very much. If everyone will please face the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi. Thank you, everybody, and thank you, Counselor Smith, for the invocation. Ms. Salter, if you will, please call roll.
Yes, sir. Counselor Waltney?
Here.
Counselor Gier?
Here.
Counselor Alamon?
Counselor Wolverton?
Counselor Sims?
Here.
Counselor Jones?
Counselor Smith?
Here.
Counselor Nelms?
Here.
Counselor Andrus?
Here.
Counselor Harden?
Here.
And President Wyatt?
Here.
You got three absent, but you still got a quorum.
Hanging on by the skin of our teeth.
Yeah, eight.
We'll take it. All right. Next, we have the reading of the minutes from our meeting of November 28, 2022. Those have been distributed previously. I would entertain a motion and a second to dispense with the reading of said minutes and for approval of the same.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Waltney, second by Ms. Nelms. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those are approved eight to zero. Next, we have board vacancies. We have two BZA vacancies. The first is Ward Five, which was anticipated, which I think we are opening. And then also, I believe we had a resignation from Ward One today, so we need to open both of those. Given the holidays, I don't, we might need a little bit longer. And of course, we're done with December after next week, so we can either do it on the 9th of January or the 30th of January. Again, we've also got holidays in January that sort of mess up meetings, so those are the two meetings we have. Y'all feel comfortable with either the 9th or the 30th?
I'd say push it to the 30th, because I think people, I think the 9th is kind of soon.
I agree. All right. So we will close both of those on January 30 at 4:30.
Got it. We will announce it.
Thank you very much. I believe that's it with regard to board vacancies, unless anyone has anything else that I'm missing. All right. Next, we have additions to the agenda. We have one addition tonight that will go to the committee referral agenda. It is 041222, request for consideration of changes to city's workers' compensation occupational medical clinic. This item is brought by me, and will go to the Finance Committee. So with that addition, I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of the amended agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Gier. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is approved eight to zero, which brings us to the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. I think that I heard Ms. Nelms first, and Mr. Waltney for the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And that is approved eight to zero. Okay, which brings us to the old business agenda. We're going to take one item out of order tonight. That's going to be 050522, as public hearing continue from October 10, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. for vacation of right-of-way of 16th Street adjacent to 2901 Central Avenue. Brought to us by Lee and Chelsea Maniscalco and Wyatt Pugh. Do you want to do a report from special issues? From, we've already reported on once, but-
I have the minutes.
Okay.
So, you know, just for fun. We had the committee meeting on October 3. This item has been carried over on the agenda here for a little while. And at that time, in October, the committee voted four to zero to one. We had one abstain, one voted, one person voted to abstain, to refer this item back out to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing, which was opened. And we will continue tonight. The motion was made by Ms. Andrus and seconded by Mr. Sims. And Mr. Alamon was the abstention. That's the word I was looking for.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay. So I see Dr. Maniscalco and his attorney right there. If y'all want to come on up and get us started, or either one of you, whoever y'all want to talk, we'll start with y'all. The public hearing is open already, so we just continued it, so.
Thank you. Mr. President, I will make the presentation tonight. If Dr. Maniscalco looks a little sleepy, they have a newborn.
We appreciate it.
Very newborn.
Congratulations.
And we intend to be brief. The, on behalf of the Maniscalcos, I wish to express appreciation both to city officials and to Mr. Shannon and his team, who has a concurrent and somewhat competing proposal to the city, that both the city and Mr. Shannon and the Maniscalcos, we're working together to try to come up with something that could meet all the needs. We have a historic parking need that has been fulfilled in this dead-end, unopened right-of-way area for decades. And if the proposed road goes through, we feel that that is going to be put at risk. There are a lot of out-of-the-box ideas that have been discussed. Some of them have not been able-
Be subtle.
Oh, I will. Some of them have not been fruitful to date, but nevertheless, we're going to keep exploring options. And so we have invited people, and there may be some in the audience who wish to speak in support of the practice about how this is a real need. One of the challenges for Dr. Maniscalco's wife, whose practice this is, is she has an elderly patient base. And so they are not as able as others to physically walk very far to get to her building. So the prospect of not having parking where it historically been is very challenging. There is an opportunity to create four or five spaces that are 90 degrees off the alley in the back, but that is not a walkway where elderly people can easily get into the building. That is a place where staff can go, and we're, we think that that would be something that potentially could be utilized as part of this change that is coming. Likewise, there's a possibility of putting one in front. If we come back, as we anticipate we will, at the appropriate time, to ask the city to allow Dr. Maniscalco to work in the public right-of-way to create one more parallel space by the bagel store. But our concept, which had come up initially, was to ask for a vacation and then grant appropriate easements back to allow ingress and egress to accommodate others, not just potentially folks who want to get to the alley, but potentially the Shannon Development or Dr. Knoll. And that Dr. Knoll's practice was supposedly in favor of that, and I think they still would be. But we understand that there's a lot before y'all. And so our concept would be not free to us. We understand that we would have to pay a vacation fee that would not be cheap, but we would be willing to do that. But hopefully, people will have open minds, and there will be an appreciation by the council, as I think there has been to date, that this is a real need. This isn't something whimsical or, you know, selfish, if you will, by the Maniscalco property. This, for this practice to continue and thrive, it really has to have that parking along the way. And so we, along the side of the building. And so we hope that whether it's some modification of what we have proposed, what Mr. Shannon is proposing, or some combination thereof, that it can work out. I'll close on this, because I did say I'd be brief. It's almost like a game of 3D chess in that the city and the Maniscalcos and the Shannon interest, about 80% overlap of what they want to achieve. They don't fully overlap, but they about 80% overlap. And so, given that commonality, if everybody will just keep on in the spirit that's going forward, we're confident and hopeful that something suitable for everyone will be reached.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Galloway.
Thank you. I'm going to sign in.
Yeah, appreciate it. Is there anyone else here tonight who would like to speak for or against this item? Yeah, come on, if you'll come on up and just sign in.
Thank you, sir.
Can we sign? If you do not have, there's, I think it says item number, you don't have to report.
Okay.
As long as you put your name and your address, that's all.
And my name's John Blaylock. I live in Mountain Brook. And I'm a patient of a central dentistry. I sent a copy, a letter, email to you, I believe, Mr. Wyatt, and hopefully it was distributed to all the council about my thoughts about the proposed, I forget if it's a shopping center, is that, is that correct, the Shannon?
Yeah, so there's, there's a development. What the only, that's not really before us tonight. What's before us tonight is the road that would connect to that, yes.
Right, but considerations about that would influence your thinking going forward.
No, well, so actually, the development can't be part of the consideration, because it's not before us, but it's just about the work in the right-of-way.
Okay, so I can talk about the development?
I'm not telling you not to talk about it. I'm just, I just, I want to be clear about what this body is able to consider and what it's not.
This is my very first rodeo.
No, you're doing, you're doing fine. And feel free to speak to what you want to speak to. I'm not trying to shut you down. I just don't want to mislead you either in terms of what, what is before us.
Sure. Well, question is, do you know about how many acres the development will encompass once it's, if, as it's planned to be completed? Is there any estimation about that?
Lynn, can you tell us how many acres the development is?
Yes, 1.5, about the size of the P. Valley Hotel.
Okay, 1.5 acres.
1.5. Well, an acre is approximately 45, 4,000, basically 5,000 square yards. So an acre and a half would be about 7,500 square yards, unless, need to be corrected about that. So the space that is being requested to be maintained is about 10 by 10 yards, as a guess, when I go there as a patient. So just by the numbers, that's a huge disparity. But more important is that, talking about somebody's livelihood here, their practice and ability to make a living. If this, if this area is supposed to be an access road, I'm not sure about that or not. If it is, I think that'd be, still, the businesses would probably still be well if there's one less access road. I don't know what the plans are for that property adjacent to the practice. So if it, if this goes against Doc. Maniscalco, then she will have to presumably continue to her profession, who have to leave, buy new property, lease new property, either build a building, or lease a building, or buy a building, which would be financially hard, in my estimation, like estimation. So as opposed to the Shannon Development, is likely, they're putting money into a development, they likely have lots of money relative to Dr. Maniscalco. And they're going to make money, I believe. This is a thriving community. And so the weight of the discussion, in my opinions, is whether we want to favor the big guy, the big person with the money, the power, or take care of a local dentist who serves hundreds and hundreds of patients in this community and others. So that's what I have to say.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anybody else that wishes to speak for or against this item? All right. If not, then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Ms. Smith?
Yes. With permission from Mr. Galloway and representing the Maniscalcos, we are going to, as, as Trip said, we are going to, we are going to work on this, and we are going to try to come up with something that is mutually agreeable to all the parties. And we are going to do that. Mr. Galloway had a trial that got continued today, so all of a sudden, we have a little bit more time to, for all of us to get together. So we are going to do that at the end of this week. But as of tonight, now that we've heard from folks, I would like to have us carry this over until our meeting next Monday, which is on the 19th, so that we can sit down together face to face and try to work something out.
All right. Then we will carry this item over until next week.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item, 151122, request to authorize the mayor to sign planned document with spectrum for the Alaris employee, 457 Employer Sponsored Voluntary Retirement Savings Plan. Brought to us by Robert Brigette and Melody Salter. And we'll start with a report from Finance. I believe Ms. Smith's doing that tonight?
Yes, I am. So the committee met last week, voted five to zero to recommend approving this item. The motion was made by myself and seconded by Counselor Alamon.
All right. So we have a motion from Finance. Any questions or comments? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is approved eight to zero, and will be Resolution 22209. Next item, 161122, request for consideration to add monthly utility service to fire department at fire station number three, classroom building, and sign easement agreement with Alabama Power to provide service brought to us by Deputy Chief Brandon Broadhead. And we'll have another report from Finance, Ms. Jones.
I've always thought that me and Walter should totally-
Right, well, you know.
I'm calling president. I think I missed the mind meld over here. That's so funny. The committee met last week and voted five to zero to recommend approving this item as well. The motion was made by myself and seconded by Counselor Harden.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Smith. We have another motion from Finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes eight to zero as well, and will be Resolution 22210. Next item, 261122, request to sign contract for services to pay fiscal year 2223 appropriation to the Bell Center. Brought to us by Robert Brigette and Melody Salter. And another report from Finance, Ms. Smith.
Yes, this item is, was budgeted, so we are just now making that payment. And the committee voted five to zero to recommend approving, going ahead with the payment. Motion was made by myself and seconded by Mr. Harden.
All right. Another motion from Finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is eight to zero as well, and will be Resolution 22211. Next item, 251122, request for consideration of a no parking ordinance for Waverly. Brought to us by Counselors Andrus and Smith. And we will start with a report from Public Safety. Mr. Waltney?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, the committee met last Monday, and after hearing from Mr. Noble, the committee voted five to zero to recommend approval pending the measurements by Mr. Hamley. The motion was made by Counselor Jones and seconded by Counselor Wolverton.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kendrick, can you give us a first reading, please?
Yes, sir. Excuse me. It's an ordinance to further regulate traffic in the city of Homewood on along a portion of Waverly Drive, and apply penalties for the violation thereof. Section 11 law for any person, firm, or corporation to park a motor vehicle on along that portion of Waverly Drive, which is 100 feet south of the intersection of Waverly Drive with the southerly right-of-way line of Salter Road as depicted in Exhibit A. And Exhibit A is the map provided to me by Mr. Hamley. Section 2, any, any person found guilty of a violation of this ordinance shall be punished as provided by Section 1-8 of the Code of Ordinances. Section 3, the chief of police is authorized and directed to rec. signs, markings, and the locations described in Section 1 above. Section 4, if any part of provision of ordinance declared to be unconstitutional or invalid by court, competent jurisdiction, or all of the parts of provisions not affected thereby shall remain in full force and effect. Section 6, the ordinance shall become effective, meet upon its adoption, by the city council approval by the mayor, otherwise becoming law.
All right. Thank you very much. Yes, Ms. Smith?
I would, I'm going to make a motion for unanimous consent, but before I do that, I just want to point out, in the committee meeting, we discussed striping the curb on, yellow striping the curb on one side of Waverly. But when Mr. Hamley went out to the site, he suggested striping both sides for the distance that Mike set, the 100 feet. But it'll be on both sides of Waverly. I just wanted to clarify that. And I would also make a motion for unanimous consent.
All right. You have a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Andrus. And a roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Counselor Waltney?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Gier?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Nelms?
Yes.
Counselor Andrus?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt?
Yes. All right. So that was a unanimous vote. So now I would entertain a motion and a second for approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Andrus. And another roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Counselor Waltney?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Gier?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Nelms?
Yes.
Counselor Andrus?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt?
Yes. So that is also eight to zero, and will be ordinance 2858. Next item, 150622, request for permission to work within the right-of-way on Ree Street, 16th Street, and alley surrounding 1707 Ree Street. Brought to us by Cale Smith. And this already had a report from Public Works, and this is the, the other item that, dealing with this area. And Mr. Shannon has already come to the podium, thankfully. So we will go ahead and turn it over to you, Mr. Shannon.
Great. This is much more intimidating than the little small room we-
[laughing]
I feel like we're just getting convicted of something.
Thank y'all for your time on this. I know y'all's intent is to hopefully make this development happen, but also make sure we preserve something very special that Dennis has had for a long time. We've been working with Mark Gonzalez since 2018. We've got a one and a half acre site. We, the site plan, the latest site plan is about the sixth iteration. We've made the street one-way because of safety reasons. We've added a sidewalk. We've decreased the building size. We really would like to have a restaurant or two, and we recognize the parking ratios can increase for that. And then we've increased the landscape area along Reece to sort of coincide with the old sidewalk plan. We think this is a good plan. We're also very sympathetic to the Maniscalcos, that they've been using this parking. So we've been working with them the last four weeks. We've come up with some good ideas so far, but hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, we can finalize that and come up with, I'd love to have unison on it, but hopefully. We believe that, we, I didn't realize that the alley in the back is grade level to the back of their lot, so they can add some parking for their employees. But we understand they've got, my father-in-law is a patient, and I found it over Christmas holidays, he wrote a letter against me. He didn't give it to me yet, at Don Williams. So we're sympathetic to the fact that let's figure out a way to try to secure some patient parking. And so we're going to listen and hopefully come up with something that y'all can consider.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Shannon. Well, we will carry this item over as well for our meeting next week. All right. Next item, 041122, request for permission to work within the right-of-way at 1501 Roseland Drive to remove a pine tree. Brought by Cale Smith. Yeah. Oh, yeah, I understand. Thank you. And we will start with a report from Public Works, and Mr. Sims is going to do that for us.
I'm looking for the one with the pine tree. Here we go. All right. Thanks so much, President Wyatt. Public Works met on December 5, and it looks like we voted four to zero to recommend the item pending the indemnification agreement. The motion was made by Counselor Gier and seconded by Counselor Harden.
All right. Thank you very much. We have a motion from Public Works. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is eight to zero, and will be Resolution 22212. Next item is 171122, request for permission to work within the right-of-way at 2510 18th Street South. Brought to us by Cale Smith. And we'll have another report from Public Works. Mr. Sims.
It was from the 12-5. I'm sorry. She had two, he had two for some reason, because it's an older item, but it's the 12-5.
Okay, so it really shouldn't be so hard, guys. I apologize.
It's okay.
I was just looking for the right set of minutes. Okay. The committee met on December 5 and recommended four to zero approval pending the indemnification agreement. The motion was made by Counselor Gier and seconded by Counselor Harden.
All right. Thank you very much. We have another motion from Public Works. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is eight to zero, and will be Resolution 22213. Next item, 271122, request for permission to work within the city right-of-way along Central at 1722 28th Avenue South. Brought to us by Reeves Construction and Cale Smith. And we have another report from Public Works.
12-5, I'll say, yes.
Mr. Sims?
I hope it is. That might be double.
Okay. The committee met on December 5 and recommended five to zero. Again, pending the indemnification agreement, motion was made by Counselor Nelms and seconded by Counselor Gier.
All right. So we have another motion from Public Works. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is eight to zero, and will be Resolution 22214.
Sorry about that. I should have been in the head.
Yeah, we didn't. Unfortunately, we got, we're at the last minute that-
I'll look back at some-
Committee Chair wasn't going to be here.
Basically, it was like when my wife tells, asks me to go get something out of the pantry, and I'm like looking at everything, I can't find the one thing.
Yep.
Apologize for that. Be better next time.
All right. Next item, 201122, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of a front yard fence variance at 1625 Oxmore Road. Brought to us by David Lorberbaum and Cale Smith. We'll start with a report from Special Issues. Ms. Smith?
Yes. Committee met last week and heard from Mr. Lorberbaum about the plans. And the committee voted five to zero to refer this item out to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing tonight. The motion was made by Ms. Anderson, seconded by Mr. Alamon.
All right. So with that, I will go ahead and open the public hearing. I see Mr. Lorberbaum up at the podium. Tell us what we're dealing with.
So this is very similar to the Nadeau property, but is a small, two-foot tall wall, no five-foot columns. That's just going to surround the front patio space.
Hey, Brian?
There we go.
And for those of you who weren't at the committee meeting, this is the Old Valley Cleaners property.
So this image here shows the wall, but it's kind of set back on the property.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone else here tonight to speak for or against this item? If not, then I'll close the public hearing and ask if there are any comments or questions for Mr. Lorberbaum from the council?
I will just, if you, if you would remind everybody what, what the purpose of the wall is. Yeah.
Okay, yeah. So the wall, so the, one of the tenants is going to be Biddy and Bo Coffee Shop, and it's a coffee shop that employs special needs adults. So it's kind of to help with that, but also just to, you know, deter cars and whatnot, and soften that area off of that sidewalk. Because right now, it's just all asphalt, that whole parking lot. So just to better beautify that space.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Not? Then entertain a motion and a second for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Gier, second by Mr. Harden. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is approved eight to zero, and will be Resolution 22215. Thank you very much. Next item, 211122, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of a front yard fence variance at 1714 Ridge Road. Brought to us by William Madison and myself. And we'll start again with a report from Special Issues. Ms. Smith?
Yes. The committee met last week, heard from the Madisons. And the committee voted five to zero to further item out to full council without recommendation pending the public hearing tonight. Motion was made by Mr. Sims and seconded by Ms. Andrus.
Thank you very much. So with that, I will go ahead and open the public hearing. And Mr. Madison is already up at the podium, so.
How are you doing?
Doing fine. How about you?
Let's see in person. Yeah, so as we talked about last week, we apologize for, for not knowing about the fence ordinance before building it, but we live on a very steep property on Ridge Road, and we were able to take one little sort of flat area to the side of the house, but it is technically in front of the house to sort of create a yard out of what was an unused section of driveway. And, you know, it was one of the measures we needed to take after buying the house to make it kid-friendly, particularly for our six-year-old, who was evaluated for spectrum disorder, was diagnosed with the unspecified anxiety disorder, impulse control. It's just, gives us a lot of peace of mind to, to have that space. It's kind of the only- Are there photographs?
Brian, do you have?
Brian, do you have the pictures that you can put up from last week?
I don't remember this one.
This is the one where the house is on kind of the hill, and so it's the, it's the yard up in front of the house. It's kind of off to the side.
It's got the putting green.
It has, yeah, it has a putting green on it. You had the pictures last week.
I haven't spoken to it yet.
I was about to say. Right across the street from Alex.
Our, our neighbors who sort of share our compound as it is, the Haines family, they, they're fine with it.
I was about to say, I did, I did reach out to Kent, because I know, I know he lives right there, and so he mentioned that they were fine with it. And it's, it's kind of an interesting thing, because they're really not like super close. I mean, y'all are on the same little area, but y'all's house is sort of, they're kind of separate.
They are, yeah.
Kind of apart. Actually, I think Alex is probably closer to you than, than the Haines.
At least close.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's probably equal, yeah.
Oh, there we go. There they are.
Yeah, so, you know, it's, it's, it's a blind turn, you know, partially because there's a big privacy fence leading into it from, on the side yard of, I think it's the Garguses I work with at the middle school. And so, yeah, it is kind of a busy road. It's, it's a spot where people throw stuff out the window. Also say, the top of the fence never even reaches the height of the road. I'm not sure if that's valuable information. It doesn't obstruct any view. A lot of transparency. And as you can see, you know, it, it's, the house is sort of oriented. It's a strange property all, all in all.
You can see the stairs right there.
Yeah.
That actually go up to Ridge Road. So the house sits down below.
Right.
The road. The houses on that side are just, are, in that section are lower than the houses on the other side. And, and Mr. Madison, we did discuss with you and your wife last week about the fact that y'all would be willing to proffer, that if y'all were to sell the property since your son would no longer.
Absolutely.
Live there, that y'all would be willing to take the fence down at that time.
Yes. I was just looking at how to use proffer in a sentence, and I am an English teacher, but I'm making a proffer.
You're making a proffer. I didn't know that word before this either, so I totally get you. So, yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would just, in, in my serious answer to Mr. Harden, as one of the neighbors, you know, this, generally not easy on front yard fences, but one thing we have been consistent about is when we have a kid that's special needs and the family makes the proffer, that we, we generally have done them in that circumstance, and in that circumstance only. So I think this is consistent with what we have done in the past. That this request is consistent with what we've done in the past.
All right. Any other, I guess I got, is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? Not that I'll close the public hearing. Any other questions or comments from council?
Yes.
Yeah, Ms. Nelms.
Yes. Have you considered any other options after, you know, knowing that there is a front yard variance?
After finding out about the variance or the ordinance.
I mean, like, do you have options besides, you know, just leaving it up or not having it?
I'm a little unsure what the question.
Do you have any?
As far as like another spot where we could fence in.
Yeah, any options? Do you have any options?
Really don't. There, I did send pictures of our backyard, which is just steep hill.
I can verify that the backyard is not an option.
Yeah, I just wanted to know if there was any, you know, consideration for a compromise to. Because I did notice it was up before it even came before us, because, and I just noticed it, because it's one of my routes.
We did not know about.
Right. And also, one of the things I was looking at is the fact that it goes all the way past your front door, and I mean, you could almost consider it a side yard, if there was kind of some alteration to the fence. You know, because it, say your house is here, and then it goes all the way to the, around the front door, and then like the edge of the house is here, and I'm just wondering like if you even edged the fence back here to keep that whole side part, to not even have to worry much about.
Right.
You know, and still have that whole flat area.
So, yeah, we, we thought about how we could sort of make it work. If we did pull it back to maybe, you know, the, the right side of the door if you're facing the house, it still breaks the ordinance.
I'm aware of that, yes.
Okay. And so, of course, yeah, when we heard about this, we did. If, if you, if you don't break the ordinance with this, you basically just have this, you know.
Right. Yeah, and I'm still talking about, you know, needing a variance for it, but I'm just, you know, I was just looking at, you know, ways to even, you know, consider it, because you just have to consider, you know, what else.
All the options.
Yeah, what, and what other folks will come at us with.
Part of the, the piece, as far as the, I don't know, the peace of mind piece, is, is having that front door closed in. And he, you know, he, he loves it. He takes his breakfast out there and sits in the, sits in the turf, you know. Yeah, but we've thought about everything since this happened, because, you know, this is the first time we've been up against anything like this, so.
Gotcha.
I just have one additional follow-up, and this is actually for Wyatt. Wyatt, and do we know the, the business which installed this fence? Did you work with a business to install this fence, or did you do it yourself?
Oh, it was a company called Beyond Landscape.
Okay. So Wyatt, can we just make sure that they're familiar with our processes as far as permitting and, and also these related requirements, so they don't install another fence in the future? In violation? Thank you so much.
Right. I was surprised they didn't, because they do a lot of work around and.
Any other questions or comments? Not, then entertain a motion.
I would motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Harden. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is eight to zero, and will be resolution twenty-two to sixteen. Thank you very much.
Can I, can I ask a question about, this comes up, and I don't know with Wyatt. We get people who build fences, companies come build fences, don't get permits. We don't get paid a permit fee. The fence gets up, and we never get our permit fee from that company. Is that pretty much how that works?
It can be. There, there are times where we can, where we're able to go back and get it, but it's, there's no guarantee you're ever gonna go back and get it, that I think is what you're asking.
Yeah, yeah.
Could, could we ask, just from a business license standpoint, when the work was done, if he knows when it is? Because we could, if they, that would be something we could follow up on, a business license respect.
Yeah, when was the work done? It wasn't long ago.
Wasn't.
I want to say about a month ago, maybe?
Make sure, make sure they have a business license, they didn't pull a permit to contact them. So it was in twenty twenty.
It's a good, good fence.
Yeah, it's, it's been within the last two months, for sure.
I just, I'm not picking on him.
Yeah, I know.
I just, every time this goes on, they get it, they, we get these fences, oh, we didn't get a permit, we didn't know. And then, you know, Wyatt doesn't get any money. You know, we need Wyatt to get some money. You know, but anyway, I was just curious, is it?
If there's something I need to pay for.
Well, we can't claw back on those fence companies.
It's not you, it's the company.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's who you hired.
I don't know, thanks.
That's okay.
It looks good, though. It's a good-looking fence.
Appreciate it.
And when you look at your lot, your lot's a tough lot. I mean, I'm.
It's a tough lot.
We'll follow up on the business license standpoint.
Sounds good. We appreciate it. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
All right. Next item, twenty-two eleven twenty-two, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of a sign variance at three twenty Oxmore Road, brought to us by Jason Russell of Homewood Hardware LLC and Wyatt Pugh. And another report from Special Issues, Ms. Smith.
Yes. The committee met last week, heard from Mr. Russell. He is the owner of the new Ace Hardware store. And the committee voted five to zero to refer this item out to the full council without recommendation, pending the public hearing. Motion was made by Mr., by Ms. Andrus and seconded by Mr. Alamon.
All right. So I will go ahead and open the public hearing. If you will, are you Mr. Russell?
I am.
All right. Mr. Russell, I saw you already signed in, so if you'll just tell us what you're asking for.
You can see on the pictures here, for the, the store design of the Ace Hardware to maximize square footage, we basically have twelve-foot high shelving across the entirety of the front of the store. You can see the picture there at the front from when we were putting the sign up. I mean, the effect from the outside is it looks like we're out of business. So, we generated the graphics with Ace. It's something they do really common with their stores to go in the front. Again, in my mind, I was thinking of it as a decor issue. It never occurred to me that it would be considered a temporary signage. So what we are asking is the variance after the fact, to be able to leave it up. I think we, it would be a significant hindrance to the business to not have it covered in some way.
All right. Is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? Not that I'll close the public hearing and ask if there are any questions or comments from council?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, is there, if this doesn't get approved, have you considered, this is kind of another option, like would you do, like, could you do shades or some sort of?
We would have to do something, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, looking at the other businesses around that are, that are, you know.
Yes, we.
Quite a few do have the full coverings, but then the ones that don't are generally doing a shade.
A shade, right.
Look to do something.
Because I will say, we, Ms. Andrus brought this up in the committee meeting, and she is correct. There is a beauty supply, I think it's a beauty supply store where the old Blockbuster Video Store was, that has the full window coverings. They did not come to us and ask us for a variance, just so you know. And then there's another beauty store kind of behind y'all that also has, I don't think it's on all of their windows, but it's on several of them.
There's, yeah, the Shell Station across the street has most of their windows fully covered.
And, and I think actual, well, no, I guess they are in Homewood. The Shell Station?
The Shell Station.
Okay, yeah, 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 they are too.
I know, like at the Publix.
I'm not sure about the beauty store behind them.
Yeah, I'm not sure either.
Is it?
Okay, yeah, okay.
Oh, that's right. That was part of the.
Oh, that's right, yeah, yeah, that's true, yeah. So, anyway, I, I just think that if this, I think there should be, like, have an alternative plan.
Sure. I mean, I would say, I think the request was actually two variances. One, the amount of the window covering, and the second is the size of the ace.
Right.
You know, the size of that ace is not crucial to what we're trying to accomplish.
Right, yeah.
So, I mean, if, you know, we would be happy to remedy that and get rid, you know, and remove that variance if we could, you know, keep the graphic and the case in the front.
All right. So just to make sure I understand, because I, and I apologize, I've had to miss committees this past week. So the, the ace sign itself is also a variance request?
No, the, the actual permanent ace sign.
Is fine.
Is fine.
Okay.
Brian, can you do, yeah, there we go. That, that ace.
Ah, okay, I'm with you.
Yeah.
Got it. Okay, now I understand. Thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments from council?
I do, I do have, I do. Could you remind us of what is the significant hardship? Is it?
Um, just the appearance of, like, that we're not a functioning business. I mean, with, when all you see is the back of the shelf, it, it just doesn't.
So it's just shelving lining the windows?
Yeah, it's just shelving lining the back. And they're twelve-foot tall, so there's literally no view of the windows.
I will say this, that, you know, I'm, it's within Ward, Ward Three and relatively close. I think that honestly, the aesthetic looks pretty good with the full window coverage compared to, you know, some other window coverage at nearby businesses. I think that, I'm glad you said what you did about the, that the twelve-inch sign, or, you know, variance compared to what's actually thirty-six inch, because, because I think if, if we take away the, the name of the business, the cover, you know, as a sign, then we're really just talking about the coverage. I think the coverage is fine, and the sign is where I have more of an issue as it relates to, you know, being in violation of the rest of the ordinance.
Sure. And, and honestly, in my, when I imagined it at first, I thought of it as being just all images. But then Ace Hardware, they have a department, they design the stickers, and of course, they won't put Ace Hardware really big in the window. But, yeah, that would not be a, a hardship at all to remove the ace letter. And that's something that we could accomplish relatively economically, just reprinting that portion.
I guess my concern would be the proliferation of signage. It's like, you know, one pops up and then, oh, they're doing it, and, you know, again, at some point, we have to say, this is against our ordinance, and just concerning the growth of that along that corridor.
Mr. President. I'm wondering whether, you know, all across there, could we reduce some of it? I understand the left side that says ace, you know, the two, the two, along those two window panes, I'll call it. That's clear, that helps you tremendously. The rest of it's, I don't see it as big of an ad, advertising for you, that it just looks, has a nice look to it, I guess, but it is. It look, I mean, it kind of opens up, hey, everybody, don't put much stuff on their windows, and that's what we're trying to avoid, isn't it?
Mr. Gwaltney, I know you had a comment.
I did. Thank you. I, I like what you've done here. I think the signage looks good, but my concern also is very similar to Counselor Andrus's in that the precedent that we set with this and the potential proliferation, because we already have other businesses that need to be brought into compliance, like the Shell Station. I'm receiving some complaints from people about safety concerns there, that this would allow for, you know, an issue of setting a precedent that those are okay, that it's okay to block those windows, because they also have shelving that they would want to hide. So I can see that the applicability across the gas stations in town and such, and other businesses. But I, I do think it looks good, so it's kind of rocking a hard place.
Could I, could I ask a question on the specifics of the ordinance? Because when Scott came out, he described it to me as any single window can only be fifty percent covered. But then, as I read the ordinance, it said window area. So I guess, I guess just a clear, clarification, because.
Wyatt, that's.
Since I would consider those four window areas.
Sure, we'll let, we're gonna let Wyatt answer that question.
Yeah. So he's correct. The, the ordinance reads fifty percent of each, each window area. And the way we've interpreted that is each individual pane or each individual window, you can cover fifty percent of that, not that you can cover up half of all of your windows and leave the other half uncovered.
In other words, it's not an aggregate, it's per window.
Correct.
Okay.
And, and does that mean that blinds, do blinds count?
No, I don't think so. I think it has to be something that.
As a sign.
Is visual, yeah. I think so.
So they could put blinds up.
Yeah, because that's what I was saying, like a shade or something for sun protection, and plus it would block the backs of those things. But what you're saying is, he could have a, he could cover fifty percent of the window, he just couldn't cover all hundred percent of the window.
He can cover fifty percent of each window.
Of each window, right, right.
Right. In other words, he can't, if he's got six windows, he can't cover three of them and leave three open.
Right.
It's gotta be fifty percent of all, of each of the six windows.
And I would say this, too, just looking at, you know, other strip centers and other businesses in that area, and this is maybe where we just need to look at the ordinance, but then you, because the issue is you have each business taking each one of those panes and putting like a forty percent size sticker on each window, and that's really, you know, it's not symmetrical, it's disjointed. I mean, honestly, it's less aesthetically pleasing than covering the whole window. So, so that's kind of where, you know, I think we need to make some tweaks within that, possibly, because if you go and look at some of those other businesses, you know, they're meeting the ordinance, but is the, is the end result really what's intended or desirable, so.
Just to piggyback on to the statement about blinds, the windows can be covered with something that's not a sign, such as, say, a dark tent.
Yeah.
Or maybe even something that just has some sort of an indistinct pattern to it. So, anything that's not, but is, if it shows product or.
Or is it an advertisement essentially for the business, yeah.
But if it's just something else, it can cover them.
Wyatt, that's what I was gonna ask Mr. Russell, if, if you could consider, or have you considered, like, some kind of opaque tent that almost blends, almost camouflages, that it's something there, and then keeping the bottom parts with the.
We, we would have to consider something.
Okay, okay.
We, we couldn't.
That's a.
It can't be clear.
Yeah.
I guess I, I would, I guess I didn't anticipate.
Yeah.
Being an issue, I mean, because it's fairly common in other businesses that they have complete panes. I mean, in the public center, the Pet Shopping Center has one whole side completely covered with graphics, and then the front is, is tinted.
And to speak to that, I, I've assigned zoning inspector Scott Cook to that issue as well, and so he's, he's making the rounds now.
Right. Right.
To sort of try to get.
Some of the businesses behind, like where the Walmart Center is, that's actually City of Birmingham, right? That's all. So, like, I know they have some window coverings, like on the, the fast food restaurants, like Zaxby's and those, and those, but those aren't in Homewood, those are in, those are in Birmingham.
But again, it looks good.
Thanks.
It's just a matter of us trying to, yeah, yes, yes, oh, yes.
I mean, I guess, and the other concern would be, like, as the code is interpreted, we couldn't take all the pictures off and then leave the words on the bottom, because that would still be a violation of the ordinance, because it would cover 100% of that window pane, right?
Yeah, but I was just thinking of something that almost, you know, not having the graphics all the way up, all the way across, because if it was tinted and it was like almost camouflage, you know, it wouldn't, it wouldn't even look like something was there. It would just be hiding the shelves, it would, because it's, you know, not translucent.
Right.
Well, and let me ask this, Wyatt, while we're talking about this. So, like, for instance, when he has the product names down at the bottom, when he's like Weber, Yeti, all that, if, if it was, if he had those at the bottom, which I don't think are a sign issue, I mean, aren't a size issue, and then he had the tinning above, would that be allowed? Because that wouldn't cover, that wouldn't cover the full 100%. That would cover, I, I, but I don't know the answer to that, and that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, it, that's a good question, because it depends on how you, how strict you get in the interpretation of each window. Is that little, little rectangular part at the bottom its own window?
Sure window, because it's a different pane.
You could say, you would say yes.
Well, I.
I would say as well, we did spend about $8,000 generating those graphics, so.
Well, I, I would agree.
Obviously, should have come, done this first.
I understand.
But it, it would be an added expense.
Well, I, I would just echo what's been said. I think this really does look nice, and you've done a good job with it, and it's reflective of how good the store is and how suc, and how successful I think and hope it will be. But I do have some fairly large concerns about what this would require us to allow in the future if we set a precedent with it. And I also agree with Mr. Sims on, on another note, that we ought to revisit the ordinance. But with regard to what we've got now, I think it's simply, if, if we're gonna allow this, then we need to be ready to allow whatever shows up in windows from here on out. And that's the problem. I don't know how we tell future businesses no when they show up and we say, in other words, we can't, future businesses show up and they don't do it as well as you did, we can't just say, no, we don't like yours, well, we really like Ace's, right?
Well, because, I mean, that goes back to the whole Supreme Court ruling, where you can't make the decision on a sign to approve or not approve based on the content or the look of the sign.
Exactly. So, so approving this is a big deal and has precedential value. So, so anyway, I, I hate to tell you my opinion, because like you said, I think you've done a great job with it. But I do think from a governance standpoint of the city, my personal opinion is that it, it sort of opens a door that I'm not sure we want to open. Any other questions or comments from council? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Do we need a roll call vote, or you think it's okay with that?
Uh, no, it's just a resolution.
I, no, just.
We'll see.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't know yet.
You don't think it'll fail on?
Yeah, yeah, well, I mean, we might, I just don't know yet.
Just to make the motion and the affirmative, I move to approve.
All right, motion for Ms. Andrews.
Second.
Second for Mr. Gualtney. All in favor? Any opposed?
Nay.
All right, so as I take that vote that was not quite loud, that was, that was, yeah, it was very unenthusiastic, and I, I understand the sentiment, I'm not, not far from you, that that is a zero to eight vote, and the item fails. Sorry. All right. All right, next item, 05-08-22, public hearing set for tonight to consider revisions to the tree and landscape ordinance, brought to us by Cale Smith, and we'll start with a report from Planning and Development. Ms. Andrews.
Yes, let's see. After hearing from Cale Smith, the committee voted four to zero to refer this item to full council without recommendation pending a public hearing to be set for tonight, December 12th at 6:00 p.m. The motion was made by Councilor Gualtney and seconded by Councilor Sims.
All right, so with that, I will go and open this public hearing. Mr. Smith, if you'll come up and just give us sort of the bullet points of the changes.
Sure, so we, these are the major revisions, sort of generally, that we have made to the tree and landscape ordinance. We added a definition of artificial turf, and in that, we included that it's not allowed in the front yard. We cleaned up several other definitions, but nothing really significant. Permit fines remain $100, but in lieu of planting a tree to satisfy the MTD, you may, homeowners may pay $1,500 per tree over, over the 50% required MTD to the tree fund. We added a couple of exemptions. One of them was that if a tree is dead or deemed hazardous by the arborist, then they're exempt from the tree and landscape ordinance, or renovations that do not increase the building footprint are also exempt from the ordinance. When planting a tree to meet the MTD, when planting trees to meet MTD, no more than 50% of a single species may be planted. For the MTD calculation, two understory trees now equal one canopy tree, and we updated the canopy and understory tree list.
All right. Anyone else here, out of all the people out there, willing to speak, here to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Ask if there are any comments from, questions from council. I'm assuming that given the depth of discussion of this, that we probably don't have those, but just in case, if we don't, then I'll ask Mr. Kendrick for a first reading.
Yes, sir, this ordinance to amend Article Two entitled Definitions and to add Article 11 entitled Tree Protection and Landscape to the Appendix A titled Zoning of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Homewood. Bureau of Daines is follows. Section One is amendments to the definitions of zoning within the zoning ordinance as described by Mr. Smith. Section Two, that Article 11 entitled Tree Protection and Landscape is amended, is added to the zoning ordinance. Section A deals with the intent of the ordinance. Section B deals with applicability. Section C deals with the administration of the ordinance. Section D deals with permitting for tree removal and preservation. Section D, excuse me, Section E deals with the permitting for landscaping. Section F deals with exemption from the ordinance. Section G deals with variance applications. Sections H deals with tree and landscape requirements. Section J deals with elimination of invasive trees and shrubs. Section K deals with plant hardiness considerations. Section L deals with maintenance of land, landscaping and trees. Section M deals with the penalties. Section N deals with site inspections. Section O deals with certificate of occupancy. Section Three provides that all other provisions of the zoning ordinance not affected hereby should remain in full force and effect. Section Four is the time and place for the public hearing is December 12th at 6:00 p.m., at which time all persons would be heard. Section Five, any part of provision or order declared to be unconstitutional or invalid by a court of competent jurisdictions, all the parts and provisions not affected thereby should remain in full force and effect. Section Six, if the ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its adoption by the city council and approval by the mayor, is otherwise becoming law.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Kendrick. I would entertain a motion and a second for unanimous consent.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Andrews, and a roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Councilor Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilor Gier?
Yes.
And let the record show that Mr. Wolverton has arrived.
You said yes. Okay. I, I do have the, Mr. Wolverton, thank you. Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Councilor Sims?
Yes.
Councilor Smith?
Yes.
Councilor Nelms?
Yes.
Councilor Andrews?
Yes.
Councilor Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt?
Yes. All right, so that is nine to zero, and now I'd entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Andrews, second by Ms. Smith, and another roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Councilor Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilor Gier?
Yes.
Councilor Wolverton?
Yes.
Councilor Sims?
Yes.
Councilor Smith?
Yes.
Councilor Nelms?
Yes.
Councilor Andrews?
Yes.
Councilor Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt?
Yes. All right, so that is nine to zero as well, and we'll be ordinance 28-59.
Can I ask one question for the record?
You can.
I had you, Mr. Wolverton, as though not voting for the, I had zero to nine on the motion that failed, is that correct?
Did you vote on the, I know you came into the middle, I didn't know if you voted or not, I apologize. Okay, it was zero to eight.
Zero to eight?
Sure, no, that's perfectly fair.
Sorry, okay, zero to eight.
Yep, thank you. Yeah, I did, so, all right. That brings us to the committee referral agenda, or the amended committee referral agenda. I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of that amended agenda.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Gualtney, second for Ms. Andrews, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is approved, nine to zero. All right, which brings us to other new business, 03-12-22, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of November 29, 2022 through December 12, 2022. It's brought to us by Robert Brigitte and Melody Salter. I believe Mr. Gualtney is still on the hook.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, I have the, the honor of reviewing many invoices from this year and last year.
So, they're winding down, I promise.
Lots of interesting things. There, didn't have any questions this week, it was all pretty straightforward. Melody and Robert have finally trained me how to review these properly, so it's, it's a breeze. So, with that, I would make a motion for approval.
All right.
Second.
Who's the second?
Ms.
Second by Ms. Smith. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is nine to zero, and will be resolution 22-217. All right, which brings us to comments. Before the mayor makes his comments, just wanted to give everyone an update on meetings. A reminder that next week is committees and council, and that that will be our last meetings for December. January, we are going to have committees meet on January 3rd, that's Tuesday. The second is the, is the holiday for New Year's Day, so we will have those meetings on the 3rd. We'll then have a regular meeting on, full council meeting on the 9th. The next Monday is Martin Luther King Day, so we will not have any meetings then. Then on the 23rd, we will have committees, and the 30th, we will have council. We will have to do a resolution about that last meeting, because it's the fifth Monday of the month, but we will deal with that next week at our meeting, but just to give everyone sort of a preview of where we're headed. Those are the dates coming up for the next couple of months. All right, so, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, just a few comments tonight, with one being, I will say, in the last two years, Mr. President, you have done a fantastic job of not having committees and council on near as many Mondays as we've had in the past.
We've tried.
So, you've done a very good job of that, because I know it's, it's a hard night for everybody, Melody and her crew especially, so just thank you for doing that. You guys have some hard decisions you have to make up here, I understand, tonight, with the signs on Ace Hardware is one of them. We all love to see things that we want, but we also have to be very careful in how we proceed. One of the things that sometimes you wish they would do is bring you the alternative of what does it look like with 50%? So, you could actually see it as well. So, I mean, those things are, are available, I know Wyatt will certainly, certainly speak to the owners and see if they can bring something along those lines, but it would be good to, to see what those alternatives would be and help you guys make your decisions. Couple, just a quick couple of things, chamber luncheon is tomorrow, of course, so we'll have the annual business awards, and we'll also have a panel discussion on the city manager, and Mr., or President Wyatt will be part of that discussion, so I'm.
I don't plan on talking much, I plan on listening.
Happy to hear that, well, as you should, since I believe the two godfathers of city managers will be.
They will.
Should be there tomorrow. And on that same note, I do want to say thank you to the city manager study group that we have put together here for the first public meeting that we had, and to those who actually were in attendance. I think there was a lot of good discussion that was had that night. I appreciate everybody coming, coming up here. Hopefully, we'll have more attendance at the next one, and President Wyatt, do you have any idea when that one will be?
I don't, I, I expect it will be probably toward, I should know better later this week, but I think it'll probably be towards mid, well, not mid spring, early spring.
Early spring.
Yeah, so like, March-ish time period would be my guess.
Okay, perfect. And then, lastly, I want to thank you to Melody, her team, along with Melanie and Beau and everybody else who has put together, of course, everything for the parade, it was absolutely wonderful. The parking rec department, they, putting that many floats together in a, in an organized fashion is very difficult. So, we want to thank them for all the festive decorations at City Hall, and of course, for y'alls float as well, so, and that's it.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gualtney?
I do not have to set public safety. We are currently empty on the agenda and no new items. Yeah, I'll just echo the same for the mayor. Thank you to Melody and her staff of elves that take care of us every year and make it easy. It is one of the events that my daughters look forward to every year, although one of them had to miss this year, but it is always just a great time. Thank you for your hard work and your leadership getting it together. That is all.
All right, Ms. Gier?
Just like to announce that Ward One will have its second annual holiday party at the Lee Center this Saturday from 2:00 to 4:00. We're gonna be having some cocoa and shooting some basketball and having some crafts, and so, everybody's invited. Even any of you that might want to come hang out with us are welcome from 2:00 to 4:00 this Saturday. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Wolverton?
Yes, I was sorry for coming in late tonight. I had a basketball game for nine-year-old, we met two Monday nights in a row. I really just wanted to follow up on some exciting news from a couple of weeks ago. Our daughter Ruby had made it to the spelling bee for the school, and in what lasted nearly three hours, she ended up winning.
Wonderful.
And they went through the list of words, the entire list of words that they had been given to study in advance, and then ended up going, and she, she ended up winning on words that they had not advertised or given to them before that. So, she will go to the, like.
The district.
The district wide, that'll be in January. So, we're very proud of her, really excited about her diligence and studying, and hopefully, we won't all get too bored of practicing over the holidays.
All right.
Thank you, that's it. And I don't, I didn't see anything new on my agenda, so.
There is not. Yeah.
What's that?
Finance is the only thing they got, some new stuff.
So, I'm not gonna hold.
Okay, perfect. Mr. Sims?
Thanks so much. In line with everyone else, echo the appreciation for parks and the mayor and Melody and everyone for a great parade. I had a lot of fun.
You rock that hat, too, you know, you, you rock the hat.
I was gonna wear it tonight, but President Wyatt.
You know, it is about costumes.
That's what I was saying. Not sympathetic. Also, I participated in my initial Walk for a Clause yesterday, which was fun, and it was a fantastic event, raised a lot of money for the Mike Slive Foundation, so kudos to, to that group for having another great event. I think every year, they've not only grown the number of participants, but also word of mouth about what it is is growing as well. I think the weather probably dampened it a little bit for people coming out, but still raised a lot of money for a great cause. And also, just to remind everybody, Wednesday, December 21st, is the manure lighting. The manure is now in place, the curve. Festivities are gonna start at 5:00, with the actual program for the manure lighting at 5:30 on Wednesday, December 21st. That's now on the beautification board, social media and other social media, so please continue to share. The details of that event was really fantastic last year, and looking forward to year two. Speaking of the beautification board, they had their December meeting today and followed up on some discussion items for the pole banners, which Sanford proposed, as well as some discussion around the pocket park and other things. And Sanford's followed up with locations of 23 signs, which I'll share with council back and follow up, so we can just continue that discussion and. share with council back in follow-up, so we can just continue that discussion and primarily work with you, mayor, on next steps for that project. And then in closing, since we're also doing some Proud Papa share moments, my son Charlie had probably like one of his best eight minutes in a basketball game so far in his life. He scored 15 points in the fourth quarter last Friday, and they came back and beat Spain Park. And this is after they lost them by 20 in the Thanksgiving tournament. So, just completely turned around. He went from not being able to make a shot to just, nothing would miss. And so it was really exciting to cheer him on, and my parents were there. So, really special moment. So, thanks, everybody.
So, how do we make sure your parents come to all the rest of the games so that we continue to win like that?
Absolutely. I gotta, I gotta work on that.
Ms. Smith?
Okay, so I'm setting finance for Mr. Jones. He has three items. There are, the only carryover item on his agenda is the 18th Street updates, which last meeting we didn't have any, so I'm not really worried about that. So there's really just three.
And the other ones, Ms. Smith, they're all budgeted. We just, so they're going to go quickly.
Two of the three.
So, yeah, because the one that was added is the city medical, facial medical clinic.
The other two shouldn't be, should be just routine, that's.
So, I mean, I feel like setting it at 5:00 would be, because I don't need to set special issues either.
I'm not setting PND.
And why don't we set it for 5:30?
5:30. Okay.
Ken, I haven't told you, but the Arts Council is ready to take their bylaws off the table. Can we do that?
We will do that in January.
Oh, okay.
I mean, we don't, we don't, I mean, nobody else has to have a meeting in the 23rd, so I would really rather do that at the beginning of the year, start that off in the beginning of the year. We can do that at the very first committee in January.
So, why don't we do this? Why don't we stick that item on the committee referral agenda for next week so that we'll hear it on the 3rd?
Well, no, it's, it's already on the, it's on our agenda. Yeah, it's on the table.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
It's on the table, yeah. It's on the table. So we just need to take it off the table. And I mean, that's just not time sensitive. I mean, it's really not. It's been, it's been on the table for three, four months.
It's, it's true. They've, they've got some folks, well, that's fine.
Yeah, we'll do it in January. Yeah. So I'm going to set finance for 5:30.
Perfect.
And then HHPC, the Preservation Commission, is not meeting this month. I attended Park Board last week and want to thank Keith Stansel, who was the chairman of the Park Board. He completed his 10th year, his second term. So he served on the Park Board for 10 years, and he just did a fantastic job, served as the chairperson there at the end. And he's just been a really, a really strong member of that committee, so I'm very thankful to him for his service. And basketball has kicked up, as Mr. Wolverton said. They have 1,000 kids playing basketball. They have-
No, not so many games.
No, they, they, when Berkeley said when he got here 14 years ago, there was 240 kids total.
Right.
And now there's like seven first grade girls teams. So, it's the number, and, and really, that number, that, that is kind of showing itself across the board. Pretty much all the rec sports are seeing huge jumps in their number. So that's a wonderful thing. Kind of shows that all of that investment in our new facilities has been worth it because they're being used a lot. And I think that is it for me. No, no special issues. So, we're good.
All right.
So we just have to name the special?
That's it.
Finance is the only committee at 5:30, yeah.
Ms. Nelms?
Melody, I just want to say thank you again, as everybody else has. Melody, I just want to say thank you again. You make us feel like royalty. Every parade we have, you make it, I mean, you make it such a serious effort and just make it like it's just nothing. And it's just always so enjoyable for us and for our families, just to be able to, you know, not have something so serious to think about and be together. And, you know, do some-
Well, I understand that, but you, you just treat us so well and, yeah, and just
make it so great for us. So, thank you again.
Ms. Andrus?
I was going to give a couple of words of feedback on the parade. I worked with a young woman who moved to Homewood from Ohio a year and a half ago, and she said that the Christmas parade was her, quote, "second most favorite night so far that she has had in Birmingham since she has lived here."
Wow.
And then, one of my best friends brought her boyfriend's kids, I, I hate to say this because you know I love my friends at Mountain Brook, but she said that parade blew Mountain Brook's out of the water. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, y'all. But she just said that-
That's not surprising.
Anyway, they just were raving, I mean, raving on that parade. So, anyway, thanks, thanks to the chamber, thanks to Melody for everything that you guys, you and your office did for us. John and I will be at the Garden Club on the 22nd.
See, why not? I don't have something else going on. Why not go to the Garden Club?
Just to give our annual sort of update, things that are going on. We will have a bridge update. We are about 90% of the way on the bridge. So hopefully, Steve's going to provide some documents and drawings for us to bring to that meeting. And then I want to say congratulations to Daniel Chaplin. He ran a marathon yesterday. Daniel was up here for Down Syndrome awareness when the mayor did the proclamation in October. And yesterday, he ran a marathon in Huntsville. So I want to say congratulations to Daniel. So, that's it.
All right. Mr. Harden?
Okay. We did have a great time the other night at the parade, so thank y'all. Beau, thank y'all. I know you had something to do with that, too.
I have candy.
But anyway, candy, I never remember to bring it, but somehow there's always candy for me to throw. Of course, we run out at the end. I do want to thank everybody for the landscape and tree ordinance. I, I don't want Homewood to be a place, I know how important this has been and how hard the work is, but at the same time, when I got a call from one of the residents in our ward who told me that he was redoing the inside of his garage and he had to redo all the trees in his yard for it, I was like, there's no way. And when I called Cale, he's like, yes, there is a way. And of course, I voted for that. And, but I do want to make sure Homewood's a place where people feel welcome to come in and do business, and we don't make it hard for them, you know, within a reasonable, that we, we have a problem with, we're losing our canopy. And, and we got old trees, and they fall, and, and trees are important. They say that if we could, if we could plant a trillion trees, we'd get rid of global warming. I'm just not sure how we'd do that when you start adding that up. But anyway, I know there's been a lot of work on that, and I voted tonight to make the changes, but I just want to make sure we're a place where people feel welcome there. We went this weekend to the Homewood Theater, and I got to tell you all, it was a great production of It's a Wonderful Life. I mean, you felt like you were watching the movie, literally. The way people spoke, the way that, it was really well done, and it was quaint, it was nice, and it's worth going to that. And they can have, obviously, more shows during the year. And I just want to encourage us to support that. It was, it was, you know, there were probably about 30 people there, and it was just so well done by the people there. I don't know if it's over yet or not, but it was very well done. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Just a couple of quick things. First, a thank you to Mr. Jones for covering for me a couple of weeks ago while I was under the weather. I always appreciate him doing that and leaving y'all in capable hands. Secondly, thanks to everybody for the parade, and especially because the parade did not include required costumes.
That's right.
And although anyone, the, the voluntary costumes are great, just as long as I don't have to put one on. And then, hopefully, I would agree with the mayor that the city manager public meeting went well. That was a good event, and we look forward to the next one. I expect that we will, that we will start to look more in-depth at the three options over the next, not the meeting this week, but the, the January, February, and March meetings, that we will sort of look in-depth at each of those, get some more feedback from the public, and hopefully be ready to come back to the council sometime. We'll see, we'll see how in-depth those discussions need to be. So, and I don't want to, I don't want to, certainly don't want to slow the committee down if, if more discussions are needed. But, but our hope is that we will be back late summer, I'm sorry, late spring, early summer with some information and the results of our research, and bring that back to the council at that time. It's obviously subject to change, again, depending, I want it to, I want the committee to be able to do the work that it wants to do with regard to this, but I, I think that's where we're headed. So, and hopefully, we're going to get some good information tomorrow. So, if you can come to the chamber luncheon, certainly come on. Like I said, I'm not planning on talking much, other than just getting these two guys to, Jeff Downs and Sam Gaston, to talk about their situations and, and give us some good information as we move forward. Are you looking at me with a question?
Question?
Yeah.
You saw my eyes.
Yeah.
We have regularly scheduled the public, not the public, but the meetings that y'all have. Are y'all having one? Do I need to cancel the one for, are you having one in December?
We are having on Thursday.
Okay, on Thursday. Okay. I, I need to make sure I send it around.
I may not be there, depending on what happens in a mediation on Wednesday, but we are planning on having one.
So this Thursday, we have already publicly noticed us standing, but I just need to make sure.
Right. Yep.
Okay. Gotcha. Thank you for clarifying.
Absolutely. All right. So with that, we are adjourned, and we'll see everybody next week.